Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Select Board Meeting. We're here at six P M. in the Land Use Hearing. We're held in in hybrid format. And present this evening is myself, Jason Peron, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Diane Gale, Clerk Doug Mogul, Assistant C E O Nadine Signoni, and joining us via Zoom is C E O Nicole Parker. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Randy Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To every father or butcher's son, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever-
First item on the agenda is going to be public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public? Pam?
My name is Steph Odorn for the Southwick Historical Society. We're having our annual walk with Southwick Spirits on the nineteenth of October. That's a Saturday. And it's from ten to one, and you have to make reservations so that we don't have a bunch of people come. What's been done? It's ten to one, and then the farm parade is in the afternoon, so it's a very busy day. And we're hoping that you'll all come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Sir?
Hi, Joe D E two five eight, meeting Hills Road, Southwick, Mass. Just a couple things. The spirit of this folk, I'm wondering if you can have D P W do a little walk through the cemetery as far as pothole goes. I was spending some time over there lately. There's quite a few small potholes, and we wonder if we could get that cleaned up. Some of the folks aren't that young at the spirit of law, so it would be nice if we can do the best we can for them. And since we're talking about North Pond and all the excitement that North Pond brings, I recall back in the day, there was ten or eleven acres put on the side of that deal. Maybe for the water department or maybe a well down the road. So my question is, Springfield Waterville isn't getting any cheaper, right, as we move forward, they're going up and up and up. So maybe we really should look at maybe putting a third well in over there. And I know it takes years. I know it's not done tomorrow. I also understand our permitting for how much volume we can take out is an issue every year, so maybe that would help us with that. Just a thought that you'd have that activity over there because of the well, you'd have more eyes on the grounds over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public comments? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make any public comments?
Someone calling in?
No, it's my tile for some reason. One on?
I don't see anybody raising.
Our next item is actually a hearing for six oh five, poll hearing, but we're, well, about one minute ahead of time, so rather than jump ahead, we're gonna wait a minute.
If there's something.
Uh, he is on Zoom. Yeah.
Other ways.
He looks familiar. I think he's done this before.
It's.
Yeah.
Not to open, we just start over. Six oh five, six oh five, we're here for a public hearing, a poll hearing. Public hearing will be, it's held here at Southwick Select Board Town Hall located at four fifty-four College Highway Lane. Use hearing room second floor at six oh five. EverSource is requesting permission to locate a line of poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, which is Nine Wally Way. And representing EverSource, I believe, is Mr. Ferraro. He is online.
How are you?
How are you, sir?
I'm great. So, uh, we, as EverSource, are requesting permission to install two thirty-six by seventy-two by thirty-six bifold handholds. Um, the structures will be located approximately ten feet from the edge of the roadway to center. The first will be located approximately forty feet from the edge of the driveway to center of box, and the second will be approximately ten feet south of the first one. The handholds are going to be used to splice our primary cable, um, just install a new transformer on site.
Pretty straightforward. But these are not poles, right?
No. No.
Are they, that'd be something, if he's just asking Mr. Mogul, are they considered poles? Is that the same?
No, I think that our clerical people said the wrong thing.
Okay. I do too, because I, I, I worked there, and I don't recall there being any poles on Wall Street. It's all underground service.
Yeah, it's all D B.
So, all right, so let me clarify that. It's actually what Mr. Ferraro said. I don't think I need to report what he said or repeat. But it's going to be two bifold handheld structures, thirty-six inches by seventy-two inches, um, that we're here for the in for. Um, is that all we, you have for us, Mr. Ferraro?
That's all I got for you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, um, for this, uh, the handholds? Or against? Is there anyone on Zoom that has any positive comments? Or comments against this hearing? Seeing no tapers, I would be approving the approval of that and a motion to close the public hearing.
If we close first, right?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, we'll call, oh, Jason Peron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
We are making motion to approve the application for the bifold handholds as described.
Next, we'll call, oh, Jason Peron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. You're all set, Mr. Ferraro?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, dear. Next item on our agenda is going to be the joint meeting with Planning Board regarding the Master Plan Implementation Committee Subcommittee Member Appointments, including the Planning Board Designee and a Planning Board Associate Member Appointment. Mr. Planning Board Members here that would like to come up, or Mr. Dougherty? Uh, Mr. Mogul, we need to open this as an individual. Don't really really good.
It's a joint meeting, so he has to call his meeting order and denote his members. Very good.
All right.
What do we have? Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica was online. Mr. Ratzinger was on.
Yeah.
That's online, too.
Yeah.
Um, well, we will open our planning board meeting for Monday, October seventh. I am present. Um, Michael Dougherty.
Dave Spina, present.
We have Jessica Thornton online and Dick Ratzinger online. And no Dave Sut, correct?
I didn't see him.
Okay. All right. Turn it over to you guys.
I guess we're here to, uh, we sign the members and listen to who we're gonna do the, uh, Subcommittee does it, or the Associate Designee.
And we are also going to discuss the charge for the Subcommittee. Yes, no?
I was not planning for that.
For the MPIC, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, we gotta do the Associate first.
Okay.
Planning Board Associate, who's the, it's a joint appointment.
I know, but we also have the Subcommittee Appointment.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be done in our meeting. All that has to be done in our meeting, right, is the Associate.
Associate, right. We can certainly have a discussion about it, whatever you'd like, but um, the agenda item is the Associate Member on the Planning Board. Were there any other, any other applicants? I don't think so.
No.
No.
Then usually just ask.
One that was withdrawn.
So usually just ask for a nomination then.
Mr. Dougherty, you have a nomination for your Associate Member?
I would, uh, like to nominate Diane. Um, for, not that. Fair enough. Um, for the, uh, position of Associate Member for the Planning Board.
Jessica Thornton, second.
And we.
And it's a roll call vote of each board.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion is made.
Oh, all right, very good. I guess it's the first time we've done one in the middle like this, so, um, Jason Peron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Michael Dougherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica.
Mr. Ratzinger.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
That's all we need.
All you need.
That's right.
And now, as far as the.
Another one year sentence.
I was, I, Nicole did mention it to me the other day. I was not planning on talking really about the charges today. I would prefer to table that and get allow me to dig in that a little bit more, because I know you've done some research as far as.
Did she forward you the document I sent her? Did you get a document from the call with?
Um, I don't.
What I sent? No.
Remember.
Okay.
Yeah, the first notice I got was this morning that you wanted to talk maybe about the charges and, yeah, I want to table that for the next meeting.
With the Planning Board or without the Planning?
It would need to be with. They're going to be part of it. We want all of us to agree on what the charge is for this board and what, what the expectation is.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to put in an opinion, but it's not, it's a, it's a Select Board Subcommittee, so at the end of the day, it's.
When we would like your.
I would certainly.
Talked about this ad nauseam, absolutely, right?
All right, so I guess you will be getting a, a bunch of examples of M P I Cs from other towns that I did some longer, some weaker, that we can consider. I expect you will be getting that.
Did we want to do this in a regular meeting, or did we want to have this separate?
Well, we don't meet again until, right, we have, we have Columbus Day next week, right? So, I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Mr. Mogul, and Mr. Dougherty, what do you want to do?
I'm flexible as far as the date.
Yeah.
And very flexible.
If there's gonna be a vigorous debate with Diane, I'm pretty sure there will be.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't, well.
I don't think so.
I have not spoken to his gal about it, but I think we were, for the majority of it, in agreement, in principle, as to what that board is charged with. Mike and I went over it quite a bit.
We just need to put it to paper so they have a guideline. And, uh, and then I said, there's, there's a good bunch of good.
Yeah, I know you would dig the bottom up, so.
Have you made a designated a through the MPIC?
No, we never done it. No.
So basically, you had a full board, so you didn't have somebody out to appoint yet.
Correct. Yes. No one's missed that, so we'll see. Well, who shows up tomorrow?
Wait a minute, was that Jessica's not gonna be there tomorrow? Uh-oh.
Oh, no, I will be there with a child in tow. I'm at missing and getting nominated for nothing.
The twenty-first is tougher for me, but I can, if needed, I can, I, you know, I don't want to delay anything, but I'm running around to soccer games and practices.
More important.
So the twenty-eighth is a little easier for me.
That's a month, right?
Yeah. That will play on using back here with the planning boards. On you.
Excuse me. Excuse me, hi. I just want to remind everybody that we do have that fire department meeting as well on the twenty-eighth at eight, at seven.
Well, that's gonna be a short meeting. We can't do that. Good point.
If we could have a different date, not a Monday, I would.
But I would be.
Appreciate it.
That's.
My art is in so much momentum.
I mean, put it on the twenty-first, and I'll figure it out. Yep.
Thank you.
We'll put it later in the agenda.
I, I'll reach out to you. Let me just get a better sense of what that day is gonna be, um, and, uh, um, I'll let you know.
Yeah, actually, now that the following week, I will be gone training for for twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth, and thirty first, so I can't do that week at all. So that'll be sooner.
Twenty first, yeah.
Yeah, that's the double shot.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise I'm flexible with it.
Yeah, and I, my inclination is probably to say, put it, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, but, um, I'll be back here by six, um, so just to get it, it'd be easier, but we can talk about that. It doesn't need to be on a public hearing, so it doesn't need to have a specific.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
That should be it.
Okay. All right, y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda. I'm gonna interview Daniel Fernandez for Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds Position.
Finally, you smiled.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good. Good to see you. And see you. Yes, Mike, I'm gonna give the one question I pretty much give to everybody in every position. Why do you want to be the Director of Buildings and Grounds?
Supervisor.
I'm sorry, supervisor.
Supervisor, yeah. Um, I like it here. I like working here. Um, I'm always looking for ways to grow and progress in life, and I believe that this would be the next step for me.
That's your one question, or?
I may have more.
I might have more. I am.
Okay, so, um, you've presented a really full resume here and some letters of recommendation, so thank you for that. Um, can you describe your experience handling multiple jobs and deadlines? Um, in, in your current employment here and in your outside endeavor?
Um, in both situations, yeah. Um, when I was more self-employed, I didn't do too many, uh, multiple tasks. Sorry. I didn't take on too many at once, because I like to focus on one thing, um, just more so because I like to see things done right, done once. Um, if the need arise, if the need may arise, then, um, I definitely worked on some jobs, multiple jobs throughout my, my career, um, whether it was, you know, being self-employed or working under people. Um, they put me in charge of smaller crews where I would delegate who was doing what. Um, and then I'd go to another job site, same thing, kind of say who was doing what, oversee that, but then also do my task as well. Um, here, now that we have the Heroes Program, I kind of see where everything is, what, what tasks come up, what projects come up. Some seen, some unforeseen, and then just just kind of balancing, see what takes priority. Um, what is important, what can kind of take a backseat for a little while. Um, you know, with emergencies, I see those take top priority, so learning to juggle now with, that we have that program, it definitely has been a huge, um, help, aid for, for our department.
Are you using that directly?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it goes right to my phone and my, my, my email, so I see everything that comes in.
It's kind of right up my. Same thing. I think that this job is, um, the communications is key. There's a lot of people making demands on your time, and I think it's the communication as to when things are gonna get done, and when things aren't gonna get done, or if things need to get shuffled up because some priorities change for due to emergent issues or whatever, obviously, you've kind of lived through that experience and, and know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So, um, how, how do you handle that, though, as, you know, personally, how do you handle, you know, constant? It's gonna be a pretty constant.
Things changing.
Pulling in different directions.
Um, communication, you know, if something comes up where it takes me away from a project I'm trying to work on, I mean, this happened the past few weeks especially. Been working on the clerk's office, the big transition there, and I'm trying to focus as much time as I can on that, but I tell them, like, there's, there's other things that come up, especially emergencies or unforeseen things that I have to address. So I, I'm very open saying, you know, this, this came up, it's gonna take me away for a little bit, it's gonna push back the timeline just a little bit. So I try to communicate as best I can with everyone to tell them how things are progressing, or if there's a setback or a holdup. You know, and I just try to be as open and honest as I can. You know, it may not be the best news for some people, but, you know, I just, I just like to be realistic. And it's worked so far.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, nothing good.
Um, can you expand on how you might be proactive in troubleshooting facilities and system problems and anticipating?
Like as far as?
What might go wrong in being prepared?
Um, just knowing the buildings, talking to the vendors, seeing if there's any thing I need to take note of. And more often than not, they'll send an email or just tell me directly if something's gonna be a problem down the road, um, whether it be with the sprinkler guys or just whoever, the fire alarm. Um, they tell me, look, this might be a problem down the road, just take note of it, write it down, we'll send you a bill or, uh, an estimate quote, things like that. Um, you know, very much trying to be in the know of things that might pop up down the road.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so one more question for you. So things that might come up down the road, you don't necessarily know about. How will you obtain the knowledge you need?
Training.
On things that you're not familiar with.
Training. Um, I've, I've started to look into classes I can take, training I can take, um. I'm currently talking to the Health Inspector Tom about taking a class for hazard communication training. I took off your town already, um, and just trying to, you know, look into facilities manager training and classes, just to kind of understand more of the things I don't understand.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm also.
Any questions?
Um, what would you, if anything, what would you like to see from me in the coming months?
Definitely do the work. I mean, you, you hit pretty much all the points that I would be looking for as far as being proactive, learning all the systems, um, keeping an eye on the different buildings and, um, knowing what may or may not go wrong. And, uh, you know, with the fact that you're putting yourself through classes and training, that shows your desire and your drive, so.
Flexibility, communication, op. Um, not just on the status of things, but problems that are arising, um, and definitely, you know, I'm happy to hear you say you're already looking into the, the training.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I'm sure you'll have, you'll have support from, from Russ and, and others that can help him, so. Um, you know, prioritizing is, is gonna be critical, so.
Thank you.
I think, to echo what she said, I think communications is the key. I think, you know, over the last couple of years, three years plus, we've had, you know, some lessons with that, and I've always been a big bad news early person, right? If you know bad news, bad news ages like milk, right? It does not get any better with age, so the earlier you can work on an issue and talk and involve all the stakeholders in an issue, the earlier you can all put your heads together to come up with a good solution. Right? Um, and, you know, and the same thing is ask for help if you need it.
Yeah.
It's available from, you know, there, you never know where the help can come from.
I told everyone I'm asking all the questions if I need to.
Sure.
Anything else for you?
Um, one more. Is there any timeline as far as when we would fill my current position? Like, would we get someone to, to fill that?
That would be like ASAP.
I mean, that'd be, that'd be great.
When you like to move on it.
I mean, just to help, you know, kind of expedite the projects going on and, you know, help more with our department.
Have some staff to supervise.
Yeah, that too.
We'll get there. Yeah, that's, that's all the staff, I'm sure.
That was it?
Okay.
There you go.
I'm also.
I'm also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is going to be vote to accept bond bids and sign required documents. They were done. I've signed most of my stuff, so. So, just, did you seen any of that?
Um, I believe last year, as the clerk, I was made to read that entire document.
I need it when she remembers.
There is, there is a spot for the clerk to sign, too. I did see that.
We need to read all those numbers.
I did. I abbreviated, though. I think I said from those years to those years at five percent.
Can you guys hear okay back there? And someone else texted me that there was an awful echo.
Oh, was that with somebody?
So I don't, I don't know if, I don't know. Better, worse, different?
We'll try.
Move the microphone away from behind my laptop. Is that better?
Okay. Best.
Where's, where's Stan the maintenance guy? Turn up the volume on my.
Or not, come on.
Do you want to read it or summarize, or what do you want to?
So I'm gonna read the first paragraph and summarize the rest. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Southwick, Massachusetts, the town certified that at a meeting of the board held, what do you know, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, of which meeting, all members of the board were duly notified, and at which point a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board and in my custody. Voted at the sale of the four million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand and twenty-four bonds of the town dated October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the bonds, to Roosevelt and Cross Inc. at the price of five million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on October fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts and bear the interest at their respective rates as follows, and there is a summary of two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty, twenty thirty-four. Um, and further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, and a final official statement dated October first, two thousand and twenty-four, the official statement. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and are hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with S E C Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in. PDF file or by other electronic transmission. Shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures. For the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer. Be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions. And execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them. Or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes. Was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building. That the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable. In accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general. As set forth in nine forty C M R twenty nine dot oh three oh three two B. At least forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays or legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting. And that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session. All in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A. Sections eighteen dash twenty five is amended dated October seventh, twenty twenty four, Doug Moglen, clerk of the select board.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of four million six hundred eighty thousand dollar. General obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty twenty four bonds of the town and to have the clerk sign the authorization.
Second. Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I. Doug Moglen, I. Three hundred and ninety thousand and twenty five, three ninety twenty six, three eighty five, twenty seven. Three eighty, three eighty. And then it goes down to two ninety five in twenty thirty. Two fifty five in twenty thirty two through the conclusion of the bond. Four point six and the payback is five point one. Including the interest. And. Skipping ahead, twenty thirty five is also two hundred fifty five thousand. So is twenty thirty six. It goes down to one twenty five in twenty thirty nine, and then it's eighty thousand dollars for the years twenty forty through twenty forty four. You're welcome. I'm gonna have to read it again.
He major mean it anyway.
He started, I was just gonna let him go.
I know.
Uh, next item on our new business is vote to extend the classes stipend to call force firefighters to be consistent with career firefighters. Chief, you wanna come on up?
Evening, everybody. So this is a proposal. To implement a program that we already have for. Career force members, our career force members by contract are entitled to an education stipend. For certain classes, and once they have the certification in the class, which means they've. Tested and have pro board certification or certificate from issuing agency. They're entitled to a stipend for certain classes, and those classes are. Uh, fire instructor one, fire instructor two, fire officer one, fire officer two. Fire prevention officer one, fire prevention officer two, and basic investigation. There is a potential, um, with the newer contract proposal being ratified. To include incident safety officer, which is an important class we added to that. I'd like to be able to extend that same benefit to the call force members, it's not a contractual requirement. Um, but it is something that I think would. Um, encourage our current corps of officers to have an incentive to get additional education. So we've been doing our best at the department level to provide this training. By inviting the department of fire services in for fire officer one, fire officer two, instructor one and instructor two right now. So we've got those four behind us and people have taken advantage of that, and not all the officers have. Um, our current budget would allow. For the stipends to be paid out, um, as they are to the career force members. Um, at the first of the year, however, I would like to, um, actually in January. Um, make that payment to the officers that are certainly qualified, so it'd be the one time payment. In this fiscal year, and then they'd be at the same fiscal cycle as the career force would be as a January one, a July one. Into the next fiscal year.
To me, it only makes sense. You want people to take the classes to get the trainings.
I do.
I assume they have to. Uh, not also be certified elsewhere with that training, this this. How do you?
So it's a pro board certification, so if they were to take the class in Connecticut and have pro board certification, it would qualify. Because it's a national register registry, if you would, and recognized that way because of the accreditation requirements that are set forth by pro board. So part of the push at Mass Fire Academy has been to get more and more of these programs to that pros- pro board certification level. So as they introduce curriculum, they have to go through the accreditation process, and that's true in Connecticut, and we're, because we're. So deep into Connecticut, they do allow us to attend the Connecticut Fire Academy, as well as other programs that are offered. From the academy throughout Connecticut, we've had people attend fire officer one and fire officer two there. They have pro board certification, which means it's the same curriculum, just taught in a different location.
They may be call force for other. Cities and towns, how do you ensure they're not being paid twice for the same certification?
I'm more concerned about the work they're doing for Southwood Fire. If they come to us with that certification, just like a career person comes to us with a certification, we don't care where it came from, if you have the certification. You qualify for the stipend, am I answering answering your question?
But would you give it to them in the? Signing on? Or every year after?
So if they came to us, no, so it would be the same thing for the the career force, it's paid. On July one, so if somebody came to us, let's say a career member was hired tomorrow and had that certification, they wouldn't be entitled to that until. July of the next fiscal year, because we'd have to budget for that accordingly, okay? If acquire the, if they acquire the training during that year, they get paid on July one for that training. That's the kind of the cutoff for a clean line of demarcation. Right now, what I would do is take a snapshot of where the officers are. These are the people that qualify, make that payment in January one of this year. Out of this budget because we have it, and then it would reset so that it was every July they would be entitled to that. It'd be on a fiscal year rotation there.
But these, I'm not sure if I'm asking that right, these are call force.
Call force.
They're available to other departments as well. They may be being paid by other departments for that same certification. As well as Southwood. Then that isn't fair to our own firefighters if they're being paid twice. The potentially being paid more than once for that same certification.
A career member could be working at a call as a call force member at another department and getting paid as well too, I have no control over what happens outside of our department.
Fair enough.
If they're getting paid, then. They figured out the system. Yeah, but what, right now, I'm more concerned about making it a. Benefit for officers and also to encourage some other people to say, if you're thinking about being an officer, take this training. You you know, there's a stipend i- involved in in this. Yeah, benefits package as well. And compensation for them.
I don't have any objection to it, I I don't, I don't know that we have too many call members that are, first of all, that are signed on in more than. Uh, more than one department anyhow. Um, I think it encourages. Those call members to, because they sometimes have, they have to make a significant time investment in those. In getting those certifications for anyhow. I I have real no objection.
I know the system. If they're getting paid elsewhere, that's great for them. That's why they work there. So. I have no problem with it whatsoever. And if you know further questions, any?
No.
Yeah, most, I guess we need to, um, go to. Extend this stipend to the call for or, um, for firefighters, so we'll be looking for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to extend the. Stipend. To the call force firefighters.
Call force officers.
Call force officers.
Officers.
I'll second the motion for the officers.
Yeah.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Doug Moglen, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Well, you're, don't go too far. We gotta do a firefighter contract.
Yeah, do that, yeah. It's. Thank you.
Chief, you have a dollar value to that, I know they don't care about money up there, but. So it's currently within the budget, and right now, if I were to pay it out, I don't think it's more than two thousand dollars if you five per year. Thank you, people that have it.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we need to go on to item. D is the amendment to the Clean Water Trust ban, Randy?
This is a. Little water department issue, but the way the program works, slugboard is the. Signee on all the contracts. Uh, so we are undertaking a lead service inventory for the water department, it's a very large undertaking, every water system in the state's doing it. We have a big report due in a week and a half. Um, that doesn't mean I'm work stopping in a week and a half. We've done a lot of work to identify where, if there are any lead service lines in the water system. We have a lot of unknowns, so we've done some basement inspections, vacuum excavations, we looked through service cards. There's still a lot of unknown information, and the way the D E P. Runs a program is if it's unknown, it's assumed to be led until proven otherwise. So, uh, this has been a very big effort. Pushed by Mass D E P, they're putting tens of millions of dollars in this program every year, this is probably the biggest program. Uh, with D E P right now, maybe aside from PFAS. Um, so the first round, we got a grant through the, um. Mass Clean Water Trust. And what we're looking to do is continue the work that we need to do. So because there are so many unknowns, one of the options we have to us is to do a predictive modeling effort, so we can basically, based on. Information in soul system, and if we know a certain percent of it, we can make assumptions that. This service is or is not led. So, but that means we have to put eyeballs, physically put eyeballs on a hundred and eighty services. Um, so what this this amendment is to do is to fulfill that program. So we can continue more ba- ba- basement, basement inspections and more vacuum excavations. And then put all this into this predictive model, and hopefully that'll cover us. Uh, to determine whether or not we, or what kind of effort we have to do undertake on the, on the, on the flip side. So we do know that there are some, not not lead, we haven't identified any lead yet. But we do have some galvanize, and actually today we found one that was a brass service on Mongola Street, construction, or brass service.
That brass required to be changed?
I believe so, there's lead and brass, so. Even a small component. So that's the next step, you know, replacement is 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 a future project, but for the time being, we need to finish our investigative work. So luckily, there is money in the program through the, the Clean Water Trust. Uh, the money is not gonna last forever, um, I did hear the program is kind of dwindling down of funds. But we do have a proposal here from our consultant to basically continue that work, and hopefully they get all that information we need. To update that predictive model. So this is, like I said, this is really a water commissioners item, they did meet last Thursday, talked about this, they did approve it. Uh, but I think this board, I think Jason is a signee on all the contract items. So I think. We're asking the, the board to authorize Jason to.
So some of this is by inference, right, like you're saying, like when you, if you find lead in, say, at. A housing development. You're gonna assume that it was more widely used than the one you found, for example.
Correct.
And this is just to finish that inventory. Of homes, and then the flip side is when you find those that have lead, what it, what is the flip?
So there is a, I think it's, I think the E P requires the town to replace ten percent of any lead or. Potentially lead lines every year. So lead, galvanize, they all qualify, I think we have twenty five galvanizers actually tuning today, we found one more galvanize and one brass lane today. So I think we're up to twenty seven, but, you know, services that have. You know, small traces of lead in them. So we would have to replace those, or work with the homeowner, a lot of them, the the services are on the. Public side. I'm sorry, the private side, you know, passive work, the curb stop, which technically we don't own, the town doesn't own. Um, but there are programs available through this trust, like so they're putting money into this every year, so I. I I'm assuming that we would probably apply for more money. At that point to.
Assist the homeowners with the replacement.
Yes, yeah.
It'd be on the.
If, if, if the town, if the homeowner, if the owners are willing to do that.
And the grant is there.
And the grant's there, then yeah.
Refuse to change it?
I believe so, yes. But there has to be, we have to notify them probably several times in writing and and phone and and door knockers and document all that, so that. We did everything we could to 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 notify the homeowner that there is potentially lead in their service line. But if it's on the pub- pub- public side, our side, we would take care of that, absolutely.
Yeah.
But the, for example, the galvanize and the brass you found have been on our side or on the, on the private?
They're on the private side. Pass, and there was copper going up to the curb stop. And the bolt, and the one was their side, houses side by side.
Do you foresee in the future where they're gonna have? Kind of like they have like a lead paint disclosure, where they're gonna have that kind of disclosure requirement on the transaction of a home, because like, once you know, you know. Right?
Potentially. Similar to like a title five inspection, you're required to notify.
But like, you know, today, if you're gonna sell a home, you have to do a lead paint disclosure, if you. And if you know, you have to disclose, and if you don't know, you almost have to test if your house is a certain age.
Right.
So I'm, I'm assuming that's probably gonna come for.
There, there is a, a new lead and copper rule that is actually going to be released any day now, I might come out today. Uh, so a lot of these questions may be in that new rule, but I have not yet seen.
So accept this, I'm, we would need a motion, we're supposed to.
Motion to have. The. Extension.
Alright, I guess I'd be looking for that much.
And it's a grant request, right?
All, all grant, there's no town money even involved in this, so everything's been a great so.
Yeah, I'll second the one.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Doug Moglen, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Alright, item B. Going to be vote the M O A with the police, I see Chief Banish on there, and Lieutenant Taggart.
Yeah, I'm here, do you have any specific question on it?
This is the M O A we talked about previously.
Uh, yes, it is to, uh, change around the. Uh, steps a little bit are off, or different steps to, uh, incoming officers with experience.
I don't have any questions, we've already discussed this in full, so.
And just for clarity, for those. Playing along at home, so this modeled after the fire contract, actually, this was something that we wrote into the fire contract a couple of years ago. Where if you have someone who's looking to make a lateral move from one department to another. That you have the ability to place them at a different step. Um, and in our case, I think it's one step above the entry level pay scale. Kind of an enticement to get someone who's looking to move laterally to the Southwood Police Department from another department. Um, and puts, um. The way our police contract is structured. By us, via steps, we tend to get to a higher rate of pay faster than a lot of other departments. So someone who's been at one department for, say, several years, actually can be at equal pay coming into Southwood Police Department, say, at a step two. Um, so this is one way, you know, to aid us in recruiting, we've got an open rack for. Um, a couple new officers, and this is one way to aid us in recruitment if we need to. So, and we, we did. Ask. The, the Southwood Police Officers Coalition, signing memorandum of understanding with the town. Um, that they would support this in, in our recruitment efforts and getting new officers on the street.
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement and have the chair sign.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Doug Moglen, I, and I'd like to thank the Southwood Police Officers Coalition for. Bargaining in good faith on that issue.
Good, moving on to item F. Appointments for the Lake Management Committee and Lake Management Canal Committee.
Okay, we're gonna. Complete this process, I think, we're going to. Just read out the appoint, the. Re-jiggered appointments for Lake Management Committee. There were corrections made last year that did not get reported correctly. Um. And same thing with Lake Management. So we are going to reappoint now for three years. Beginning seven one twenty-four. E. Michael Coombs, this is for Lake Management Committee, E. Michael Coombs. We are going to. Correct the prior adjusted years. For Paul Murphy. His term is seven one twenty-three and expires six thirty twenty-five. Scott Graves, his term is corrected to seven one twenty-three to six thirty twenty-five. Norm Cheever was correct, Deb Harris was correct. Eric Muller is corrected to seven one twenty-three, expiring six thirty twenty-six. And Malcolm DeBay was correct, uh, Dick Rannells was correct. Michael DeBay is restated at seven one twenty-three, expiring six thirty twenty-six. Those members all. Carry forward three years thereafter. The associate members were fine at one year. Lake Management Canal Subcommittee. This is correcting the prior year that didn't get done, right? So Dick Rannells, these are all one-year appointments. They were reappointed for threes and twos prior, so Dick Rannells, Mike DeBay, Malcolm DeBay, Eric Muller. E. Michael Coombs, Scott Graves, Deb Harris, and W. K. Phillips are all. One-year appointments. On Lake Management Canal, and we should be done with those.
You need a motion for those appointments, or there was no appointments in this fiscal year?
There were some with, and these correct their terms based on the prior year mess-ups, so that was a motion to make all of this.
I'll second the motion then.
Yeah, I wasn't mentioning myself, so. Roll call vote, Jason Perron, I.
Diane Gill, I.
Doug Mogul.
And that will be sent to the clerk as well. She's in agreement. Yes.
Next item, item G, Southwood Historical, Historical Society requesting a special town meeting. Any members wanna come on up?
Lee Hamburg. Forty-eight South Fallingide Road. I'd like to put in a request that there be a special town meeting held. And I'm suggesting late November or first week of December. Of this year, for consideration of funds for seventy-four College Highway. Which will. Reserve, conserve that land. Which is ten and a half acres. You, you look very fascinated with this, Doug.
Nope, you guys are under a time constraint.
We are under a time constraint. Um. And we will. Have to, uh, amend. Some of our previous submissions to the CPC. Um, due to, uh, some legal clarifications.
What's your, I'm sorry, Mr. Ken, what's your deadline for your PNS?
Uh. It's the end of this year or the very first part of January. So there's not too much time. We'll be speaking with the Conservation Commission and with the CPC. Within the next. Um, I don't know, twelve days, ten days.
Do you plan to put a CR on this property?
Yes.
The reason for the conversation with conservation?
Yes.
That was a tongue twister, okay, yes. But CPC has gotta send an article to town meeting, right? To have such a warrant.
Correct.
And you have to go back in front of.
We will, we will be presenting before them again, I, I suspect.
Do we have any other business that needs to be?
I just recently, yeah. I believe we, I know there was something mentioned in the press and I believe it was parking record related, if I'm not mistaken.
Being. Hipper balls.
Yes, that's what I thought.
There's at least that.
I was gonna say there's at least that, so.
I know we still have Rosier Road and I'm pressing people to push that forward to get accepted. It's delayed and delayed and delayed. Then we could add. Do it.
Randy, where are we on that?
Seven minutes is the record, by the way.
Yeah.
That was the fastest special that I've been party to. First vote for the Mooney and then a tip.
Oh, it was two, yep.
Do you have any questions that I?
No, I, you, I, I, sorry, you, you were, I'm, I'm not perplexed, I'm, I know where it's this, the scheduling and we try not to do a. A special for a singular article, though we understand the, the deal here. You, you were kind enough to explain that to me, the whole. This kind of process when it was formative down at the, at the museum, so. I, I, I was nodding, cause I, I kind of, it, it played out exactly how you said it was gonna play out later, so.
Well, you know, the, the funds will actually be used. Um. For the, the conservation, the difference between industrial and. And conservation value instead, so.
It says here they have a December twenty-fourth. Deadline for.
Yeah, that was the initial deadline. There may be a, a different one in the PNS that was in the, uh, the original, I think, uh. Uh. Purchase offer, so.
On that, different also, the, isn't gonna be like two or three different articles?
Mentioned date. Not later than Jan. Three, three, first, two thousand one five.
Okay. Well. And it's, it's, it's better, but I don't wanna push it till the thirty-first either.
No, but you've got, you've got Thanksgiving, that last week of November.
Yeah.
And then, um, I don't know the exact date of Thanksgiving, but it's probably on a Thursday and. But that week's, you know, a no-brainer. A lot of people travel, so the week after is usually, and then you're into December and now you start running right up against Christmas.
You know.
Usually right after the first things kind of settle in. But we, we'd have to confer as a board and see what we can pull off and what facilities are available. To us to hold said.
Yeah.
Special and, um, always good to consult with. Madam Moderator to make sure that she's available. For said, oh, Madam Moderator, how are you? So it's always good to consult with her to make sure she's available.
That, that's very wise on your part.
Yeah, I honestly did not know she was there, she was.
You have to like also, you know, look at what's going on at the high school if they're supposed to schedule it.
What I just said, yeah, exactly.
You know. In some ways, that's why the first couple of weeks in December typically work better because sports season hasn't started, they're not using the, the. Gym or the auditorium, but they are, like, there's plays in them, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Very, very well done, sir. So, item H is other new business.
So what are we, what are we doing with that now?
Have to.
Are we gonna have Nicole and.
We have to figure that out.
Celeste work with the school and see what's available first?
Or both, are we in agreement? I guess we would have to agree that we're going to call a special for this. This in the first place.
And, and then try to schedule it.
Yeah, and then if there's other business to be done, I mean, we, we.
We, I, yeah, I didn't wanna.
You just don't wanna get into the business of, and in no, no offense to anyone that just presented to us, but. Never get in the position where someone comes running, cause we could have a special, and the next week someone comes in and go, we need another special. And then, you know, we end up having five or six specials throughout a year. It's costly and burdensome on, on, on staff to do that, so we try to roll up everything. So, I, I don't have any objection. It looks like there might be, you know.
Go for it.
We can just work, I, it doesn't need a formal vote of the board, but I think we can. Check with Celeste, check with the schools and see if we can do it, but I just wanted. Be clear about that, you know, so, and I'm, I'm not picking anybody, but you know, next week if. You know, someone else comes in with another, you know, or the week after our special, and someone else comes in, okay, next meeting's in May.
We're taking it under advisement and we're gonna do the research. In the term of, it's, we need. So, other new business. I have none. This time.
I do related to special town meeting, um. Actually, Mr. Steinhardt. Dear to his heart was the exterior of this building, which has kind of been, uh. Uh, gone quiet. And that was supposed to have a CPC application being prepared as well last night noon. So I had asked Russ to check that, and that could be something else. If time allows, we could bundle into that. Special town meeting. Um, also. Really quickly, Port of Health has a public hearing coming up on tobacco use, um. And I'm gonna guess there will be very low attendance. It is. Not broadcast well, um. And I would like to make the following suggestions. There's, there's also a community outreach meeting for one of our cannabis applicants that. Again, isn't broadcast well. And if you go on the town website and just put in public hearings and January first, twenty twenty-four to date. You get zero results, which I just don't understand. So I guess I'm suggesting maybe we add a subscription to the alerts. For all public hearings. And also a dedicated page on the website to list all public hearings, so that when you search, you don't come up zero. And perhaps even an option on the code red notifications that you can opt in if you wanna hear all the public hearing notifications. Um, and then the new Facebook page might also be a good place to post all of our public hearings. Uh, you know, we want people more involved, but they don't know they're happening until they read it after the fact in the paper. If they get the paper, so. Suggestions.
So what is the cannabis one? They mentioned, you know, certain names.
Um. October eleventh, five to seven PM at six sixty College Highway.
Yeah, I was at their location that way, didn't I?
Um, and you can also email them with questions in advance at Pioneer Valley Trading LLC at gmail dot com, spelled out Pioneer Valley Trading LLC. For that. That's all I got.
Mr. Mogul?
Nothing for this week, sir.
We don't have Ms. Parker, she's down. Nadine, anything? Onto old business. We are going on to item A in old business plow contract pricing. Randy?
We met a couple of weeks ago, talked about, uh, snow plow rates for this upcoming season. Board has some questions, so I submitted a letter. Uh, the response to those questions. Um, assuming you've read the letter, any follow?
I'm waiting on you.
I have none.
Convince me.
Well, you're the one that I would ask about the writers, we were talking at some point about that.
Yep.
Um, you go ahead and ask, I, I don't have any questions, so. First time. I'm, I know how this works and I know what we need to do to get people to plow, so.
Do you have any questions?
No, I kinda understood it going in from where it was coming from, and I'm glad we asked the question.
Um, I liked the clarification on the per vehicle thing was very, but a very useful thing to find out.
I was surprised by that as well when I asked.
I've discussed this with other people because I said, you know, you know, I have to get a special rider on mine as well. I'm gonna do. Private snow plowing, so. And then again, it's like, I. I do know it's based on the size of the vehicle, machine vehicle, whatever you're using, so. I understand that completely, and I know. Nicole reached out to Maya and that's something that we can't do. Um, as far as. Uh, covering it under us. But apparently Maya is looking into a program where it might be possible, so. You updated comparison that you did, was this the most recent one from prior to week or last?
I did update the comparison of the communities, yeah, so I, in the past, I had Westfield, Agawam and DOT. I reached out to most of our other neighbors, uh, Southfield, Connecticut, I added rates, Long Meadow. Uh, there are some communities that don't hire snow contractors, I put those on the list. Um, just to kind of compare, I still think we're, you know. I don't think we're high, I don't think we're low, I think we're right now, right in the ballpark.
Randall does all the roam?
They do all the roam, yeah. Surprised to hear that, yeah.
Wow.
No. No. I will say that, you know, remind you that we've lost three contractors in the past three years. Um, I don't want to lose anymore. Last year we lost one at the very eleventh hour, literally. Um. We've been talking to some of the contractors about plowing this year. I know one of them just today said they made a commitment to Westfield. So I'm hoping we still have enough. We, I mean, last year we were down eight trucks. We made it through, luckily. We didn't have a big winter and we didn't have a lot of big storms or back-to-back storms. Um, but yeah, we definitely struggled in that, in that regard last year. Like to get back to our, our normal, our normal fleet.
So one element is raising the rate ten dollars. An hour.
Correct.
Per truck. Um, the sign-on, is it a sign-on and attendance bonus is the? I'm not in favor of a sign-on bonus, I'm in favor of a performance if there's any bonus. So, how would you wanna? Structure that?
I kind of copy the language from other communities, I mean, I don't think there's. It's a bonus is basically to help offset the insurance, you know, basically provide a minimum payment that they're guaranteed to get for the year, whether there's. Zero inches of snow or a hundred inches of snow. Help offset that, that insurance payment. Uh, the way I was thinking we structure it is, um, it's due at the end of the season.
Provided they.
And, and it's, it's, it's prorated based on the number of snow events they plow, so if they plow ten out of ten events, they get a hundred percent. If they plow nine out of ten, they get ninety percent of that, that bonus. I'm open to other options, I just caught, that was.
Item that I mentioned on the private side, go a lot of places now go with. A guaranteed minimum whether you show up in their parking lot or not.
I think, yeah, I think Agawam, they did, they did a combined, they did, they did. They did a sign-up bonus of two hundred fifty dollars, that's flat, and then they have a performance bonus of seven fifty, and that's if you plow seventy-five percent of storms.
I think there should be a.
Per truck.
Per vehicle, is all per vehicle, yeah.
But there should be a required, you have to have at least met. And I would say seventy-five percent of the attendance requirement.
Yeah, a, a, and the contracts we have, we have now, we've never had an issue with them, not sure. So I wanna, I wanna keep it that way. We are probably gonna have a new contractor this year, just to fill what we lost last year. Uh, but we've never had an issue of contractors not showing up.
And you're saying seven fifteen total, it's not a sign-on like this one and seven fifty, you're proposing one. Seven fifty.
Per vehicle.
Show up a hundred percent of the time, you get seven fifty.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
You good?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the difference is you, it's, it's either front-loaded or back-loaded depending on how you looked at that, I. I think it makes sense to do it. Um. And I was, I had the unfortunate. Experience, if you will, to. Kind of take in what happened when. Um, a long-time contractor left us in the lurch last year in the face of one of the larger storms we had in a few years. Um, and, you know, given the trend, you know, the trend over the last several years for winters have been fairly mild, and so it's difficult for the. The plow guys to make that investment in the insurance, but they have to have the insurance to hit the road. It's not like you can call the guy when they see snow falling and go, okay, I'm in, it's gotta be in place. Um, so I, I think. You know, the Agawam, look to me like the Agawam model is probably appropriate.
For the performance.
Yeah, you make it a performance bonus and you show up, but we're also going, you know, if we have. It does kind of. I forgot the term, I used a good term last meeting and now I forgot what it is, but it kind of, it, um. You know, it, it de, de-risks a little of it, that was the word, right, for, for the operator. Right, no matter what happens, they're gonna get seven hundred and fifty dollars a truck if we have one storm.
I will tell you, I know one of our contractors lost money last year, so we paid them a total of about sixteen thousand dollars. Eight thousand dollars was out the front. At per insurance payment, even for the snow, first snow start. Now at least eight thousand dollars for their help, their gas, their equipment if it breaks down. There was no money left, they, they lost money last year.
Alright, you good?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to raise the rate ten dollars an hour per truck. And to. Create an attend, a performance bonus. Minimum seventy-five percent. Attendance. Attendance per truck of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's to be paid at the end of this.
At the end. With seventy-five percent, so.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you.
Sorry to give you a hard time, but gotta ask those questions.
That's fair, you know.
And I wasn't giving you a hard time. You just gotta ask those. I have to.
Old Business Item B, High-Speed Internet Committee, IMA. W G N E for ISP Presentation to Select Board.
Yep, we failed to get a quorum two weeks ago.
I did.
And we had, we had a quorum, but it was a debatable quorum. So I actually reached out the attorney and then the, just to err on the side of caution, we did not meet. We met last week. We did have a quorum, but there were three key members missing. So we are reposted to meet Wednesday. Please send my regards to. Yeah, cuz your bird's gonna be pissed. But it was the only date that we could all agree that we're all available, so. We're gonna meet on Wednesday. Location to be determined, this hack comes in here.
You know, hometown grant. I've got all my letters. I just gotta send it out. And actually, just to kind of look up date, I do know um, Ms. Anderson is also looking to put in for an additional hometown grant. Um, for the senior to, to center to put in a um. Some sort of covered pavilion that they could utilize for functions there as well, similar to what they do with like the um. They do a wally park with the. Go down and scissor and all that type of stuff, so.
Where do they wanna put it?
For functions where?
Here?
Here. So she's putting in for, it's a, it's a grant. We can get more than one in this town, so. There is actually a couple towns that have gotten more than one, never at the same time, but there are a couple that have gotten additional grants after. Being awarded a grant previously.
It's to can put in the parking lot and.
The area outside her office is what I'm told. All right, items. That, yeah, item D. North Pond. Conservation area test source recommendations.
Okay, this says vote. We're actually going to discuss and vote, correct? All right, I can facilitate this. I have a. Looking dirty here. That uh, highlights the, if I may.
Absolutely. This is your, your.
That uh, highlights the key areas in the main recommendation, so. In the order that you all had read for the parking area. We are looking for a vote to reconfigure the parking lot to four spaces or some other count if you think four is not appropriate. And choose that configuration from what was in your documents. So it is for. Number to serve our purposes of controlling parking lot.
I don't know how this is moving.
Or with one of those spots being handicapped.
Yes.
Accessible is, is perfect.
Okay, so. And a configuration, the tighter one. Without the temptation of side parking or just moving that forward and keeping the sides? Or did you have another suggestion?
I would probably go with the moving before you.
That was just moving this forward and keeping those side ones with, and then putting signs on them, no parking. I'm more in favor of this one because it actually restricts the, you can't, can't fit to park there.
Blasts people off. I'm not opposed to whatever works.
All right, so. I will make a motion to reconfigure the parking lot to four spaces in. The layout in appendix B. Number two of two. That was a motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Do we want to vote to limit the parking areas? I mean, the parking hours. There currently isn't any. Um, and it could just be from.
Dusk to dawn. Well, it depends. Like, I, I don't know. If we go the other part, the, the model that we use for park, but this is where I'm gonna ask, is this due to conservation? Restriction type things coming to play in that.
This parcel's not part of it. It's our property.
Parking lot is all ours.
So. I would want it closed by dark. Yeah, sunset, whatever.
Dusk, dusk will remain.
So motion to limit the parking to.
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk. And then, of course, we need to sign for that, which I did not include. But the next one is a vote to fund the new parking area signs, the location and descriptions one, two, and three on the map. Provided for signage. With funding to be identified by the C A O and subject to our approval of the contents. So that would be right in the parking area, signs one, two, and three would be the main. Parking, I mean, uh, rules and regulations. The hours, the no parking sign. Uh, these are just the parking signs.
Good jewelry. What are you doing about that together? We just didn't initially vote on the reconfigure. We didn't do a little.
Did we, did we not vote on that, on the hours? Did we not say that out loud?
Yeah, I know we said it out loud.
We didn't vote.
Okay, let's do it again, cuz I don't know. We can't really, we can't see the recording. So motion to limit the parking area hours from dawn to dusk.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogan, yeah.
All right. Motion to fund the new parking area signs, one, two, and three with funding identified by the C A O, subject to our approval of the content. Meaning that it is a little more firmly worded and explicit in the do's and don'ts. Cuz this is what it currently says and it's kinda soft.
Now we can.
All right, so that was a motion to find the funding. Nicole will find funding.
I don't think you need a motion for it.
No?
No.
Okay. Um, and then a vote to open the parking area either now. Or after it's reconfigured. What's your choice?
After, just so anyone can get in there and do their thing while they're.
Motion to have the parking area opened after, immediately after it is reconfigured.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Street parking, this is the really costly one. Um, we need to vote to remove the temp- temporary no parking signs on South Long Yard Road. We can do that immediately as we so vote.
I don't think we need to vote.
No, we didn't.
Cause they, they went in by decree. They didn't go out by decree.
Okay.
And they've been removed.
So he's, so he needs okay to remove those.
Yep, they already, they should have been removed today on technical. Either that, or he didn't break it to them today, but that's fine. He did ask me to, so.
So we. Can vote to install a minimum number of no parking signs with funding to be identified by the C A O. And we can designate the beginning and endpoints of those signs and then D P W can determine how many that is. And an authorization to purchase them as soon as possible, January, February for installation on or before. April first. So that's one piece is the South Long Yard, no parking signs.
Did we ever come up to some sort of? Idea, proposal, solution for like the hunters and time of.
That's where we.
I thought we had to have a public hearing on that.
We can limit.
For South Long Yard Road. We actually have to go through the legal process. Randy's nodding his head. I know we talked about it. Yeah.
So you can issue tickets.
Right.
Yeah.
We need to go through that process. And the public hearing would also, should hopefully bring out that fact that's been mentioned before that it, the no parking can be seasonal.
But who's going to prepare? For the discussion at a public hearing. We need to, we need to make a decision on what we are going to recommend to the public.
Correct.
Is, is that what we wanna do? Limit the number, li- limit the span and then determine the number. And if it's a shorter span, it doesn't impact the. Wildlife management air, may not impact the wildlife management area. And we can come back to this one if it needs more thought.
Let's. I think you gotta go.
Cause we gotta figure out the.
But you could start, I think you.
Have to schedule a meeting.
In my opinion, what you do is you go further and then at, at or during the public hearing, you can scale it back. You probably can't go the other way. So.
All right.
My suggestion would be, say, a mile in either direction of the center of that parking lot. At the N P C A on South Long Yard and the residential streets surrounding. And then let's take the input at the public hearing and then see where to go from there. And then you can, you still have to probably, I don't know if you have to go to town. No, you don't have to go to town meeting for, for that, but you have to have a public hearing on it. For us to enact a rule and regulation to enable the police department to ticket and tell.
All right, so the second part of that discussion was. A less costly option on the side streets. So are you suggesting that this be part of the discussion at the public hearing as?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Uh, okay, so at public hearing, it would be on South Long Yard and the side street.
Yes.
And peel it back.
And, and Mr. Brand, cuz he's, he's been down this road. Pun intended.
No disrespect, but I was gonna suggest that I would work with Randy and Nicole.
I'll take care of it. I'm gonna take care of it.
But it should come from what's already.
No, it's fine.
I think that my suggestion is not. Juxtaposed to what was in the report.
No, no.
It's just, it's just catching the wide net and then you.
That's the full one. And then there are options B and C. Okay. All right. The restoration barriers, et cetera. We. Assuming this is under our jurisdiction to do.
That was gonna be a question of mine, so based on this reading. Well, the reading I was doing already, it was, it, it's not clear as to whether we can even put anything in the walk like.
I'm not even there yet. You're jumping ahead. This is. Can the select board? Vote, do we even need to vote to close the proposed areas of restoration or is that? All under the jurisdiction of conservation? Or do we need to authorize them to close the area?
Yes, we need to find that out. I would say that we need to talk to Concom. They need to talk to D C R and make sure that's something we can, that's something we can even do.
They don't need permission from. The state. They've already determined that.
All right.
They don't need permission. Do we need to give them permission to close it? And in those restoration areas and. They had. The issue with that is there is a second proposed area to close that they are in disagreement as to its severity. I have proposed the shoreline and as you know, nobody wants the shoreline. That is continuously abused. And now we are in disagreement whether it's abused or not. So I, if we are allowed to, I would like to. Have a vote to close this suggested area A and this suggested area B.
Uh, well, I'm gonna, I know we've already had the public hearing, unfortunately, this already and. I do know there were some members of the public that were here that were expressing their opinions prior to the meeting. And the one thing I have heard, because I will admit this shut the beach, put up Boeys thing when I first got on. The select board and this be, I realized how much of a hot topic this was. That was one of the first things I said. And I will say I got crucified in the public on that one. And this is, they, you know, we are. As long as, as well as Concom, the stewards and the ones that deal with this place. But I represent my constituents, so I don't know, I, I can honestly say I. I, I really don't know on this one. I know where personally I would do with it because I agree with you, so.
We're not right there yet. We're talking about the restoration.
I'm just saying.
We're talking about the restoration on the land.
Well, that's part of the shoreline.
No, it's not.
Well, what's this then?
You're talking about the water access. I'm not talking about access, yeah. I'm talking about the damage done to the physical land.
I got that.
That needs to be closed.
Yeah.
To restore it. It is not going to restore itself if. The neighbor is still allowed to come in and rake crap up. The same originating.
Here it talks about both. So we're talking about on the land side. Not from.
We're talking about on the land.
So, okay, hold up for one second.
This is where we wanna put.
So here's, here's the thing. Limiting the parking area and posting the no parking is going to go a long way. If nothing else is done on that property. It will go a long way already. That being said. I support the conservation effort that they have suddenly found the gumption to take on these tasks to restore. The hillside leading down towards the water. Um, and we should support that there on.
Where the trees were.
Yeah, we, I mean, we. We are, at least at this time, are the appointing authority of the Conservation Commission and they're subject to their, the laws. They are also the holder of the deed restriction on that property. So we need to support them on this issue. And they've, they've put forth a good faith effort to try to get that, that area and uh, restored. And there were several members of the public that came to this board and there was also folks at the Conservation Commission with some. Pretty decent ideas on what you could plant there that would make that rather unappealing for future. Uh, people who had ill intent on that property. So I think it's a, it's a good idea to let them do what they're going to do. There.
Well, they're not gonna put planting soon.
They had talked about it.
They wanna close it, uh, that's that and let Mother Nature regenerate for two years.
But I will.
Fence idea wherever, is that?
That, that's, that's where these marks are. Closing these off. And here, and, and this is the fourth proposal. And wh- wh- what about down here? You're saying this is the, this is the shoreline. This is the trees. This is the shoreline.
The, the.
That we need the person walking in to not be able to keep clearing as well.
I think you need to have a bit of an education process down there. What we, we were talking about before the meeting, I know it's, it was, it was ahead of the, the meeting, but with. Um, you know, people can tie off their boats at. At water's edge. It is a great pond. That is their right. They do not have the right. Um, to beach a boat and then, you know, set up shop on, on the shore. Such as it is. That's, that's the issue that conservation needs to come back to, figure out how they're gonna preserve that, that. Lakefront area.
That's, I have no problem with putting, you know, on the land and restricting the access from that side. It's, you know, and actually personally, I, I wish we could kind of block that off.
We're not restricting access.
I'm not saying that.
We are not restricting access. To the property from the land or the shore. For two years, we are closing off certain areas. For restoration.
Right.
Two years isn't gonna kill anybody, number one.
I didn't say that.
But you, I, well, and I'll leave it to the folks that, that have more knowledge of this than I as far as restorative effort. That, that land's gonna take a while for it to restore itself, given the abuse that it suffered over the last five years. But I'll let the folks that know what they're doing in that space, whether they're on our Conservation Commission or elsewhere. To give us counsel on what's the best approach. For that, whether it's planning, whether it's planting or just letting it be, we'll have to see.
So we are not making any. Order. For the restoration of those areas. We're leaving it to conservation. We are not gonna take a vote anyway, which way on this.
I'm, I am but one member on this board, but I would not. Because I think, look, last year. Because I think, look, last year, we had to step in, right, because of. An absence of, of whatever you wanna call it over there, right, and, and it, it became a life safety issue. Um, in the surrounding area besides. The, the ongoing repeated damage that the state had threatened to find us for over the years. So we're back on a, on a better track right now, um. And we've gotta give them, you know, I think we've taken some common sense, sense steps to close off. The unfettered access and overcrowding that was going on there, to have the, the property used more for its intended purpose. And let's see how we do. And if we need to.
So we are.
We will step in again.
We are going to wait and see on that.
That works for me.
That's my opinion.
That's on the land.
It's on the land.
We can vote to authorize. Either lake management, lake safety funds, or perhaps town beach funds, or wherever else CAO can find the funds. To purchase and install rope floats in the shallow water at that shoreline. Where the boats beach on the shoreline before you go there, because the. Fish and wildlife people, while we were out there, said they refer to the purpose. And the purpose is to assure that the premises are retained in perpetuity and their natural scenic and open condition for fish and wildlife conservation. Native habitat protections and associated outdoor public use consistent with those protections. And to prevent any use that will impair or interfere with such. And that is an impairment when that happens. They only need to be in the very shallow part so that the boats cannot, and as I said to those people. You have every right to get out of your boat and wave or walk. To that shore, but your two feet go on that shore, not your boat.
And I don't think there was any disagreement about that, and we'll see if there is or there isn't. But this, I.
I, that's the one.
From a.
Beginning, that should happen.
From a marine rescue source, the float's a case of twenty-four. Five by nine locking floats lock on the line, a hundred and eighty bucks, six hundred foot spool of the rope is ninety-five bucks, it's two hundred and seventy-five bucks. Do we wanna vote to authorize? The purchase and installation of those rope floats in the shallow.
Thirty seconds.
I was gonna say you better buy three sets.
Yeah.
But I think you, I think, I think it goes, needs to be repeated what the Commonwealth wanted. You know what the Commonwealth wanted three or three plus years ago?
They wanted telephone poles put in the water.
They wanted a fence. Out from the water.
This, this past visit, they said we could put telephone poles in that water.
So, I think that this is a fair. Uh, a fair trial and ask people to use their best judgment here, because. Step two is exactly what the state wanted and no, no one wants that.
I said, Boulders, telephone poles, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so make a motion to authorize the purchase and installation of rope floats in the shallow water. To avoid boats reaching on the shore.
Yep, second.
We'll call vote Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Alright, vote to another barrier, vote to install, I found the donated gates and chain link fence panels, um. They will donate to a sort of, we just would, they would like us to also pick up the old bleachers and take them to the transfer station. In return for those panels, so if we would like to vote to authorize DPW to go pick up that stuff. And they can install. That barrier at the. Neighboring offending property here at number nine. He's got his own gate here that he comes in and out freely, we wanna put it right in front of his gate.
Is it the tractor guy?
Yes. And with a town of Southwick.
Should we just serve that gentleman with a no trespass now, it's, it's been duly noted in the police log that he's done it more than once.
I believe we don't have physical evidence. And we have people calling afterwards.
Yeah, well, this is what.
And this is when we get.
Was subject to an open meeting law complaint by, uh, against another board in the past about this.
One of the things was to have conservation install their cameras and uh, put one right there. And there's our evidence.
So the gate would be on town property?
Correct.
Second.
Correct.
We'll call vote Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And then the sign, um. Other signage, authorize the Conservation Commission to use land management funds, and I don't know if we need to do this, or they can just do this themselves. Do we need to authorize them to do it?
No.
Then that's theirs.
They have a revolving.
But subject to, again, that's the sign subject, we want to approve the content. Um, same thing for the signs at Bab Road, location eleven and nine on the map. Actually, no signage on this whole area of the property where we have it out here, absolutely no signage. However, so you don't even know you're there. So I guess on the temporary signage inside, that is again, they'll figure out their ways to fund that.
Yeah.
Or come and ask. And we don't have to do this, I asked Nicole if she wanted to talk to somebody at the. School graphics department, see if they have somebody who.
Not subject to a vote of this board, they can.
Okay.
Fully support it if they wanna get involved in it.
Alright, so that's A and B, we don't need to do that. Um, and then I guess we can just have Nicole also work with. The wildlife management district manager who offered to put signs on the other side. So would you authorize her to do that, is that a vote or just have her do it?
That's fine.
Enforcement, then we get to the bylaw. I sent it to chairs of conservation, park and rec agricultural, lake management. And CPC coordinator for review and suggestions, the only feedback was the Conservation Commission's objection. To restricting access from the water, which again, we are not restricting access from the water, we are making them do it on foot. And we already have provisions in our current bylaws to do so.
Madam Vice Chair, I suggest that we have a public information session, much along the lines of what we do with that hunting bylaw. Um, this will be able to provide a forum for us to disseminate the information and take feedback from the public. And for what we're trying to do here, so it doesn't look, it, it won't appear heavy handed, it'll appear constructive. And there's a lot of stakeholders here with Conservation Park and Rec Ag, um. As far as, you know, elected and appointed boards that would have a stake in all of this, you know, especially around, cause this would affect. The linear park, Wally Park, and any of the other conservation lands potentially. And uh, police department as far as enforcement there too. So I suggest that we cover that, whether that's in early January, cause it's gotta get in front of town meeting in May, we're not gonna call a special for it.
Well, we, we, no, we could do it in time for this one, I was proposing we send it as is to legal counsel to review. With the objections, comments, which are very limited that I got back from anybody. There is literally ninety-nine percent acceptance by all those parties, except for. Again, the, historically, they wanted that to be a beach.
I agree with what Mr. Morgan said, I think we need to really just have a.
And then we can, and then we can have a public hearing based on what we get back from legal counsel with their standing on it. Are we legally allowed to do so, and then have a public hearing? And if we do that rapidly enough, we could have that at this special town meeting that we want to have soon. And have it in place and enforceable. By the beginning of the next season.
My, my opinion is always, yeah, I get it, but my opinion has always been that something that of this. This nature, I don't believe this is ministerial, I think this is a significant policy adoption, and that should be done, in my opinion. Only at the annual town meeting, I don't think that a special is the place to. Is to bring for significant leg, any significant legislation, um. Outside of the annual, people, they're, they're, they're not well attended, it's a fact. And people are gonna, no matter what you do, people will complain about it after. So May is the time to, to bring forth special legislation, I know we've done it. It's been done in the past a couple of times, I objected to it then, and I'm gonna object to it now. I think we have plenty of time to get this right, May, it's still before, or right around Memorial Day.
Right before.
And uh, right before Memorial Day, and then, you know, sixty days after. But, you know, the parking thing will be in place, the parking lot reconfiguration will already be in place, we'll already have some of the tools in our. Pool belt to, to be able to do this, that the, the piece that's missing is gonna be some of the enforcement. And we can hand out copies of that bylaw at that to let people know it's coming, and it will. I think it'll go a long way, I really do, and I, I just as soon have a, a, a pub, you know, I.
Well, there, there is, it's a bylaw, it's gotta have a public hearing.
Hundred percent, but I don't, I would not be in favor of pushing this for, to try to get this done for, now we're rushing to get a special done. For the historical commission and plus maybe pickleball and something else. You know, there's already been community support for the pickleball, it was voted, this is a, um, basically a modification of that vote, right? But I, this is, I would not be in favor of pushing this before the May town meeting.
I am not either.
Okay, that's fine, I'm good with that.
So, you know, early January, dead of winter, people got nothing else to do on a Tuesday night. Come down, we'll have a good public information session and kinda go over that, we're past the holidays. And be ready for that.
I would like to send it to legal counsel now.
Of course, no, no objection there, but it's. Plus, you know how quick they've been lately getting stuff vetted anyway, January is probably right on target.
Yeah.
And thank you for all your work on this bylaw.
My job. Okay.
Alright. Item E is the update on the dog hearing compliance for Lori Fijal. So. Everybody got this and read it, apparently Miss Fijal did everything with the exception of the automatic locks, um.
Was there an update?
You didn't, you didn't judge?
No.
It was in the, it's in your packet.
It's on page. Forty of sixty-nine. That's the one.
We're back in for next week, we're not meeting next week, we're in the weekend.
I'm sorry, I read that wrong, I guess, the first time. That she, I just thought she didn't do any of the.
No, she.
Okay.
She had done everything according to what I've been told by.
Okay.
CAO partners, and everything except the auto locks.
So why do we have to have her come back in?
Cause it was a condition of her, of the agreement that we put forth with her.
Right.
And you can't allow people to just not do stuff that they agreed, that they said that they were wrong to do.
So why are we not just going to?
Cause we're the, we're the, we're the.
Issue the violation then.
You could do that if you'd like, but I'd like to have her in here and do it publicly, cause I want people to. I don't wanna have another dog, dog hearing in a month or three from now, and they go, well, you let that lady go, no, we didn't. Or on the next agenda.
Okay. Sorry, didn't.
No worries, no problem.
Didn't know where you're going with that, okay.
Other old business, um. So LPP thing, um. I sat, me, Norm Cheever, once see Colin Mall, in our conservation. Vote, update, law change, um, the, the legislation, it clearly states, clearly states it in that, so that was. The easiest thing, finally found something that clearly defines, cause the way the Mass General Law read, it was, it's. It wasn't definitive as to whether or not, um, we could or couldn't, but our uh, legislation, it's, we're waiting on. Does anybody know where exactly it is?
What are you talking about?
The Conservation Commission issue with LPP. He would ask me to, to, to try and sort that situation out.
But they want a person on our conservation.
They cannot have that, hundred percent, because then I was in our conservation legislation. You referenced the Mass General Law, and um, we presented that, and Norm Cheever and I went through it, and it was, that was. That did not definitively say you could, but our legislation clearly definitively says you have to be a resident of Southwick, so. That issue is done, um. Mr. Mall is aware of that, um, for whatever reason, he got back to me and he said this is proposed legislation. So, um, I gotta have Nicole reach out and find out where that is. Cause they're fine with not having a conservation commission, but they want it in black and white that they can't.
Perfect.
Are they paying, are they paying for the year though?
They're, they do not have to pay for the year, we do not have a contract in place. Do, do the math, their, their contract ran out on July first, they don't have, we don't have a contract to make them pay.
So when we execute it, they're gonna send us a check?
Yes, yeah, they're, they have the money ready, it's just.
I agree, I agree.
You know. Cause I saw what Sabrina said and. Yes, we, she is incorrect. So not to be, I'm not trying to be mean or anything along that lines or.
Okay.
But she was incorrect in her, on her math, so, um.
Well intended.
Yes.
There's no contract for them to pay.
Yep, correct, um. I do not, that was my biggest update. My scale?
I'll pass.
Mr. Morgan, any old business?
Absolutely not tonight.
May Dean?
No.
Alright.
You know what Conservation is meeting tonight?
They are meeting tonight.
You know where?
Probably, either three or in the basement. I was wondering what you were doing, Mr. Barelli, how we could help you, I didn't know what was going on.
Did you have an appointment?
No, I know he's got with Concom, yeah, they usually do, we booted him.
We're gonna go over our monthly reports for the CAO after. Minutes I did review, there was at least one error that I found, it was not Tom Goddard, it was John.
I sent, correct.
Make sure, you're gonna go into exec session, right?
So.
We're just gonna approve the minutes.
Make sure you get, we need the exec session, so.
Alright, motion to approve the September nine and September twenty-three regular minutes. I just did.
Alright, there you go.
Roll call, Jason Peron, I.
Okay, I just had these minutes sitting there forever.
Now you can't find them, you buried them?
We just need to go, I need to, the warrants.
Why don't you do that, watch this looking.
Warrants, we're gonna acknowledge warrants payable number two five zero nine B in the amount of. One hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents dated nine thirty, twenty twenty-four. Payables number twenty-five oh eight B in the amount of six hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents dated nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, special warrant. Payable number twenty-five oh seven B in the amount of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. Ninety-two cents dated nine sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and payroll number twenty-five oh seven in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand. One hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents dated nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. We are going to prepare to go into exec to do.
One of you, that's one too. That, real quick?
There's a sign on the door, it's consolation.
Yeah, two.
Motion for the September sixteenth executive session minutes.
September nineteen or sixteen?
So six.
Which date was it? Sixteen or nineteen? Just to be. September sixteen is correct. Uh, second. He wants to hold the other.
Okay. Roll bubble, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Morgan, yes, and let's table that, the other ones, so the next one. Doug Morgan, yes. And let's table that the other ones to the next table.
You give that back to her?
I'll tell you. Oh, okay. Alright, we will be going to executive session. This is a motion to go into executive session. Pursuant to Mass General Act chapters thirty A, section twenty-one's two and three, and chapter two fourteen, section one B, Labor Council. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police union coalition, fire IAFF, DPW. Nine, union staff and clerk union, UPSU. Executive session regarding Mass General Act chapters thirty A, section twenty-one, two and three, two fourteen, one and B, and exception two. Both to go into executive session to conduct both the bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Moves to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. Moves to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chairman move to go into executive session to conduct. Strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Moves to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. The person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. Free court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award a warrant that damages.
Executive session.
What's that?
I made a motion for an executive session.
Second, roll call vote Jason Peron, I. Doug Morgan, yes.